South storage facility located south side of Ridge Road, 1041 Ridge Road. After the manner of our associates request a site plan approval to allow construction of a self-storage facility consisting of eight one-story and one three-story buildings on a 5.9 acres acre site located in NC medium intensity commercial district under the Corritown Webster.
How you doing? My name is Matt Muzum with Pastoral Associates. With me here tonight is the developer representative, Brian McKinnon, also the partner of Life Storage. I have some packets that I'd like to hand out if that's okay, that really representation what's up here just so you can see it better. So we're proposing to construct a self-storage facility at 1041 Ridge Road, which is just on the south side of Ridge Road, next to Brewster's. The parcel is about 5.9 acres in size and it is zoned in NC. The current zoning does not allow for self-storage facilities, which brought us to having to go through the zoning board process for these areas to allow for this project to move forward. Approximately six months ago is when we started the process with the zoning board, where we attended several meetings, also as part of the process, came to this board for sketch plan approval. We have received our use variance as of October of 2020. And as part of the process, as I said, we came before this board for sketch plan approval and we received a positive recommendation for this particular project to the zoning board for the areas. Since then, there really hasn't been any changes to the density or the building types of units that we're going to be providing. The only change that we've made is moving the buildings around some to accommodate fire access and sewer access. As part of the project, it'll be, the project will be gated, secured, there'll be car readers, there'll also be knock boxes for the gates to allow fire access. We're proposing nine drive-out buildings and one three-story climate-controlled building in the center of the project. Also on-site, there's some constraints which I'll note, there's a federal wet man that's on-site, it's in the northwest corner. And there's an existing stormwater neighborhood facility that was actually constructed to handle the runoff from this particular project or whatever had gone through, which we documented is actually sized to handle this, it's actually sized to handle a larger development than we're proposing, so that is actively taken care of. The project meets all the zoning requirements as far as front subbags, rear subbags, density, so there's no additional variances that are required in that aspect. And now I want to talk a little bit about traffic. Some of you may be aware that there was a memorandum of understanding, an MOU, I'll refer to it as an MOU, stands for memorandum of understanding. That was developed several years ago that was related to this project, that asked the developer if they were to get to 35,000 square foot of commercial retail space, if they would construct some sort of cross-access. In fact, if you go back through the meeting minutes, that number started at 50,000 and then was reduced to 35,000 as a result of some of the traffic studies that were created or taken into account. So what I've done here is I've provided, you know, going back a little bit, there's been some questions whether or not that MOU should really be, is necessary in this case because the traffic that a self-storage facility generates is significantly less than the traffic that a commercial retail plaza would generate. So what I've done inside the package, you'll see, is I've compared the two uses and I've actually used 34,000 square foot for retail shopping centers as a threshold because 35,000 would kick you into, to provide some sort of cross-access.
Excuse me, do you mind if I get a copy of that?
Oh, I didn't give you a copy.
I don't know, just give me a copy.
I'll give you my copy.
No, no, it's okay. Here's the track.
Yeah. I was just going to refer to it. So you can, you'll notice on the traffic, the traffic generations for storage warehouse for square footers that were provided, proposing, there's approximately seven, seven inch cars in the AM peak hour and the PM peak hour. Obviously, most of you know that many warehouses or storage facilities aren't really heavily used during the peak hour traffic times. There's also a Saturday count that's on there for your use. If you look at 34,000 square foot of retail shopping centers, you're on 102 cars for the AM peak hour, 143 cars for the PM peak hour, and about 153 for the Saturday peak hour. So we put this together to just kind of help with the understanding as to whether or not this is really necessary in this case and how we compared everything. So going back to the proposed development, the developer will be constructing approximately 270 feet of roadway just to get back to the site. The developer has offered to allow or put an easement over that roadway to allow any of the other parcels at their will to connect to the roadway at any future development or any future type of work. So those are kind of the outlines of everything and I know I threw a lot of information at you guys, so if you have questions, feel free to ask. I'm sure we're going to have a little bit of a discussion. One thing I forgot to mention, a secret was completed as part of our use variance, so there was no, was no environmental, major environmental impacts, but it was a negative decoration.
Yeah, Brian. Yeah, we, yeah, we.
We've talked a lot about this.
Talked a lot about this whole thing. But I don't have any drawings showing where you're going, remember we talked about the road more across the front there?
Yes, so, so the issue that we have is we don't own the property. We don't own the property across the front and then actually if we're looking at the easements, easements are never, there was no ever any easements filed. So we don't own the property to be able to file an easement to allow roadway to go across there. It was something we discovered as we're doing some additional research on the property. But again, we can, we can provide an easement on our roadway that if anything's ever constructed there or in these other lots, we can, there's an opportunity to connect.
See, that's why we, we had a diverted from the back roadway was, because what you understand is putting that roadway across the front.
Correct. And like I said, I, you know, I thought we had easements set up, but after you looked through the actual easement language and there was never any easements filed to allow us to do that.
Who's got the piece of property directly in the front and the west side of the driveway there?
So Brace Yourself LLC. So I believe it's an orthodontist or dentist.
Okay. The lot lines, did you show me the lot lines, driveway or any, actual lot lines?
Yes, so there's a, I don't know, it's 41 foot wide access, it's the property line and then it opens up into a parcel. So the Brace Yourself LLC has this kind of L-shaped parcel. Again, we've met on this and we initially thought there was an access easement that was on Brace Yourself property, but there actually was never an easement, was ever filed for that.
Your drawing says 50 feet?
I'm sorry.
You just said 41 feet. Is it 41 or 50?
Uh, it's 41 feet wide and then it widens out to 50 and then it gets even wider as you come down, you can kind of see how it's actually. It's 41 feet plus or minus, actually, I'm sorry, 41, 6.9, 47, 48 feet at the right way. That's the dimension there.
And the parcel, it's Brewster's parcel?
Yep.
That is the correct lot, right?
That is, that is the correct boundary. We, we, we had our, our survey company, did the boundary survey for us, we know that that's.
Well, the reason I asked, if I'm bad. When Brewster's parcel was suddenly up harder than it was supposed to be, where the driveway was, right on this one.
Yep.
And actually this driveway, if you remember, they had three lanes to turn to wire and to, that clearly did not fit for this big road. So when they, even though they gave the approval for the subdivision, it looks like whatever land was, was a problem for somebody.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know anything about that unfortunately.
Yeah, there was a whole series of stuff, the workplace of driveway, I don't know where it did that later, because we had the extra lane and having two aisles lanes going up.
Yep.
It was something that clearly needed to be provided, and that's actually probably to be able to leave it. And that whole layout was considered, I mean, it was something that Brewster's, to me, it's concerning when it says that actually doesn't do it. But how that parcel was supposed to come through, and when was that actually this driveway? There is a lease?
Yeah, all of that, I don't remember exactly, yeah, this.
The only subdivision that I've been involved in was this parcel over here, which is on the other side of this, it really doesn't affect the road back. I would wager that the turn lanes and the, the aisle was given, this was going to be developed as a commercial shopping.
Oh, yeah, okay, the whole layout.
Yeah, that was Brewster's.
Yep.
The size of the parcel, both for Brace Yourself and for Brewster's parcel, were leaned out to the current, that side of the driveway. And they were leaning out so that those parcels, so that was an access to Brewster's.
Right.
Building driveway, those parcels.
Right.
And in some respects, it's almost a blue plinth, very disappointing to see, I think a lot of them filed.
You know, you know what, Derek, some of the things you're asking right now, Derek, I think, are you folks?
We own Brewster's.
Okay, so this is a public hearing, so why don't we open a public hearing if you guys want to hold on a second while I, why don't you folks come out and go ahead and come up to the microphone, please?
Hi, Tiffany.
There you go.
Hi, Mary, this is Joe Amato. We own Brewster's. I do have a letter from Paul Schneider, who owns Piece of the Rock LLC, which is the land that we're on, the previous Brewster's owned. I was his manager for years and we just bought business from him. First thing I want to say is they are using 1041 Ridge Road for their address, that's my legal address. Gulf T was 1051, please change it because the community thinks I'm moving. I'm not. We just invested our retirement and savings into buying this business. Not please, didn't even know anything went before the zoning board, we were never notified. So that's something to keep in mind, that things have been trying to go under the table here. Would you like me to start with my letter or Paul's letter?
Would you read it? If it's in the sequence, I'll read it, I guess.
Okay, of, what was that? I'm going to read Paul's first as he is the current landlord at this point, because in buying the business during a pandemic, yeah, talk about putting everything on the line, we had to hold off on the land purchase for the time being. This is from Paul G. Schneider, owner of Piece of the Rock LLC, who currently lives at Flower Mountain, Texas. I write to the Webster Planning Board to express my bewilderment at the Ridge Road Gulf LLC proposal for a self-storage unit on their development site. As the owner of a parcel located on that site, approved for subdivision in the spring of 2015, I share a direct and compelling interest in the direction of any further development on the site. Having started the Brewster's Real Ice Cream Store located on this parcel and having run that store for over 25 years, I have a direct interest in seeing that store continue to prosper as a part of the Webster community. I relocated to Texas in 2020 and sold my store to my, to longtime residents of the area, but I still have an ongoing desire for the success of the business as well as the economic health of my tenant. When I opened the store in the spring of 95, I was a tenant of the Gulf T and a part of an outdoor green space recreational center for the town. When the Gulf T land was sold to Ridge Road Gulf LLC, the town was presented with a development proposal that included residential, retail, and out parcels, still very compatible with an ice cream store. Five years later, when the subdivision was proposed to the town, the site development plan included retail and now professional services that included increased and integrated parking availability. The current proposal will actually decrease available parking rather than increase it. It fails to address the traffic and parking access and integration of the three frontage out parcels within the site. It does not mention anything about the existing driveway as the new entrance is outlined. It modifies and decreases the egress of the new driveway, a departure from previous proposals. Putting aside any considerations of aesthetics or the appropriateness of sitting this function in a medium-high commercial development, I have only one question, what happened? I have relied as a businessman on 25 years of town and developer interests and direction. I feel blindsided by a changed site development plan that doesn't seem totally compatible with the town's wishes and in fact, holds a real possibility of hurting my land ownership and the business on which it relies. Finally, the lack of mention of anything to do with the frontage parcel suggests a continuation of a pattern of neglect in regard to their appearance and upheaval. To the board, I would respectfully suggest that there are many, many questions to be answered about this proposal, among which are its effect on the community and businesses and the extent to which it does or does not dovetail with the previous four directives. Bottom line, proceed with caution. Paul Schneider. You can keep that, it is copied into the record. My comments. As the owner of Brewster's Ice Creams, I'm investing in the development of the area surrounding our business. We entered into the purchase of our business based on the information from the last visit to the planning board in 2015, where plans were reaffirmed for retail development with increased integrated parking with one common entrance. We are looking forward to these plans. Clearly, the focus for this development has changed. Instead of increased parking areas, I will be facing a reduction in parking. We also don't see one main entrance. I invest quite a bit in landscape costs annually to provide an attractive site for the Webster community and our customers, yet I face an annual battle trying to get the current owner of these parcels to mow the empty lots that are front Ridge Road and border our business both to the east and the west. I realize the proposed storage units will be 300 feet back from the road, but it's not 300 feet back from my business. The lack of integration between this development and what currently exists is nonexistent. I believe that this choice of a proposal would have a negative income on our business.
Now, you're saying, but where, where, why am I seeing your property separate and where is the reduction in the traffic or your parking?
On the plans that they have set forward, my property line goes to here. They are proposing to rip out all the asphalt from here to this line.
Is that the property line?
This is my property line. They want to rip out asphalt on my property.
On your property?
No.
That's according to the line. I don't believe that's the case.
Because where they drew the property line is not, you'd have to look at this closer, but that's not where my property line is and everything is not on here. It's kind of a light pole, like they want to remove one of the light poles that's in back, but whether or not you gentlemen are aware of this, I pay the electric on that pole. I put in LED lights on that pole. Why is the light pole going to come out if I pay the electric on it? So there are definitely some things not adding up.
Well, um, this is, I mean, what I'm looking at, assuming this property line is direct line around the project, they should be doing, all their work should be within their property.
But you'll notice they put proposed edge of asphalt, that's where they expect to remove the proposed edge, everything up to their property line they want to remove.
Okay.
And as Mr. Anderson stated, he's aware of Brewster's, he can't deal with reduced parking or any flow.
See, I'm, you know what, I'm not seeing, I understand what you're saying, but if I look at the line, I don't see where, where you are getting, if they're taking your drive, you're saying, I guess, they're taking your asphalt out.
From here to this side, is that the proposed removal of the asphalt?
I see it, we got that.
There's currently an asphalt probably back here and there's another, there's another shrubbery around.
Sir, if you're talking, you need to talk into the microphone.
There's currently another hole, shrubbery and a circle around it of asphalt and they don't beyond that fence line, but they're proposing removing more than that, they're proposing removing more than that's up to.
It's not clear on this.
Variance, it's not clear.
All right, okay. You know, we're suggesting, if we get into this, and I guess you guys are going to have to get together and maybe you guys can work it out, discuss it, we probably would, are going to end up needing a site drawing, a date location that's showing the property lines, that's probably the best thing we could ask for. And then go from there, whatever's on your property is what you're working with, that's the only thing we can do.
But I'm also curious where the planning board stands on, it's always been that center driveway with the two lane, you know, three lanes there, which this doesn't indicate. I was supposed to lose my entrance because the town only wanted one curb cut, so when the things change?
Well, that's, that's the problem that I'm going to help right now.
And I, I really appreciate that you had that memory of it.
We have to go through the files and find how that parcel was supposed to be self-located in the spring of 2015.
I have, I did my research.
What was this, last six years ago?
I've got, the conditions, the conditions that were met, April 21st, 2015, resolution 15-059, had a whole list of resolutions for that site and what it was in 2015 and what was proposed at that time. I had all that pulled up.
Yeah, that is true. Is that just a thought?
Yes. I'm missing one of mine, oh, there's the other one. It's a lot there. But I had all the conditions that was supposed to be met.
Isn't this driveway from Ridge Road the only access to the entire parcel from Ridge Road?
Currently, my driveway is the only access from Ridge Road to the parcel.
Yeah, when I'm talking about the proposed driveway, the way it was supposed to be and the ways to pick it up, it's the only access to where on the development site of this entire parcel, the whole parcel, right?
The new driveway that they're putting next.
Yeah.
But that would mean if I lose my driveway, how am I accessing, how am I, what's my next?
And that's, yeah, because I remember that, yeah, if we put a driveway in there, your driveway disappears. I remember that.
Yeah.
And they're proposing, they said that they'd give an easement on that driveway to be able to access the rear parcels. They got a gated situation here.
Exactly.
And if people are expected to drive through a mini storage to get the access to what's going to be behind there, we don't know what's going to be behind there, but it wasn't set up for this kind of use. I think it was a misfit all the way down.
The access to, this, this is what I remember as well. The way the parcel's going, I think, is totally different than what you saw. Something that possibly the previous lane owner never tried. You know what, if you could leave a copy later, if you have another copy.
I know. I have, I actually have to use one of them because I'm trying to replace this kid around my dumpster and I have to send them a copy. I know. Do you have a copy machine that I?
Well, you got, you got the dates there.
Yeah, it's April 20, April 21st, 2015.
I think we need to see it now, right now. Yeah. So now the way this stands, that would be one issue resolved. I don't know where that line goes on, but what I'm seeing, the other issue was devoted to supporting that that road doesn't go through that to make that connection over to those parcels across the road. I mean, we lost the back. That's, that's very disappointing because that was.
It's the only access.
Twenty years.
That's the only access to the, to the, to the west.
Yeah, no, I'm talking about in the back, remember, I watched that roadway to connect with the, with the.
I think before we could do anything with this, we need to take a look at what the proposed, what we, what we did for the entire parcel before.
The overall.
Overall, yeah.
But see, what the trouble, what's happened is apparently over the years, parcels that had been chopped up and sold off, and now you don't have access across those businesses.
The last time there was actually a proposal of how it's supposed to be. And I'd like to see that as compared to what we're looking at.
And your on this, you had, it's actually kind of a snapshot of it all, you know, for all things, it shows a much wider entrance driveway, it shows a greater apartment added to your parcel.
And I mean, to be blunt, my business has not slowed down over the years, it's grown. I can't deal with a reduced parking. Anybody who's come to the store knows what I'm talking about.
Well, the parking, that, that's a separate issue, that's wherever, wherever the property line is, that's going to be yours, you know, that, that left, you told me by taking a map showing the exact, you know, the lot length.
Right, but I'm talking as far as entering from the center roadway, what we were told to expect, that's where, there's confusion.
Yeah.
The original proposal was going to make it easier to get into the area, not add another driveway to the building on top.
So in theory, one should be able to tie into that new roadway?
Well, the original plan that shows up there, it was supposed to be access off the new driveway, new apartment, the existing driveway was supposed to be there, but it was all part of the condition of the food, so.
Mr. Schneider, do you mind if we clarify some of this stuff?
Not much, but.
Yeah.
I think first of all, we've got some stuff.
Yeah, they will.
So we can.
But I mean, to give you an idea of how dominoes, because we were told to expect a driveway coming out, when we did some landscaping a couple of years ago, instead of doing permanent cement. when we did some landscaping a couple of years ago, instead of doing permanent cement beds to put tables on, we did it as temporary because we were figuring we have to put parking over there and we have to move it to the other side of where the driveway is. So all these changes really do impact us on our line for how we were trying to follow what was given to us.
All right, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Just like to make a couple of comments. I'm Brian McKinnon. I've been associated with this project since apartments were built in the rear there at Webster Green. Not even how many years ago that was now, but it's been 10, 12 years. So I'm pretty familiar with this project. I'm sorry, I sense a little angst with you and I apologize for that on behalf of our unit. It's certainly not meant to be a hostile neighborhood. We're not going to do anything to impact your business other than what we can do within the legal rights of our property. We believe this enhances the site. I can tell you firsthand, the reason we got a use variance from the board, the zoning board, was that we had zero interest in that site. It's only has 47 feet of frontage. There's, there's nothing that retail, office, medical, you know how well Webster's planned Ridge? The frontage pieces are consumed and there's a number of sites in the rear that just don't get a traffic. There's no interest there. So we would rather have 34,000 feet of medical office here. It's much more lucrative for our team. It's much more financially rewarding. But the reality is there's no market. There's no market for the retail. So we spent five years trying to market this, paying the taxes, paying the upkeep, you know, being good citizens, and we had zero interest. And we took that to the zoning board with a boatload of information and documentation that satisfied the zoning board, that we made every effort we could, and we had no interest. None. So there's a huge demand in this town for self-storage. Life storage is already the largest purveyor of self-storage in the country. They've got a thousand locations that are a class A operator. They are going to be our manager. It's a secure facility. It's gated. You're not going to have all kinds of traffic. You're not going to see a lot of lighting. You're not going to see 24/7 activities. That may not bode well for your business because I understand traffic generates sales. I've been near your store many, many times. But there will be traffic generated because we'll finally have a project. And if it's 30 cars on the weekend, that's an opportunity for people to enjoy your business. Right now, it was just a bunch of grass and weeds there and there's no demand for the property. But our intention is to be good neighbors. And I apologize for the, the tone. That's not what we're looking for. You being a business owner, have the utmost respect for what you're doing and especially during COVID. We understand what you're driving through. So we're trying to be good neighbors. Maybe we generate a couple hundred cars a week, but that's more than we're getting now because there's no demand for the property to speak up. I think there's some confusion, Mr. Malta, on the access. This plan significantly reduces the need to access this property from Ridge Road. In fact, I would argue that if you look at the site plan, the rear access where the apartments are and the Conifer Senior Housing in the back, I would argue that most people will probably take that room because it's just easier to get in the back of the property, do your storage and leave than it will be to turn in and out of Ridge Road. So we do have two access points. The entire area is secure. The traffic counts, the impact on the school district, fire, police, ambulance is virtually nil. So, but, you know, we've been paying our apartment taxes. So it feels like the meeting went a little sideways and I'm just trying to kind of bring it back into scope, if you will, because it's a very clean site plan. It's a very good use of the property in the back. It's 200 plus feet from Ridge Road, nobody knows it's back there. And I think Matt can address some of the engineering issues that may be discussed, but our intention is to be good neighbors with Brewster's. And if you want to be offline, talk about landscaping, anything we can do with our property that affects your property, we can give you some parking off of our property. We'd be happy to give you an easement over that. We want you to be successful and all we can do is bring people at property and hopefully they frequently get their operation. Thank you.
Real quick, just a couple of further clarifications. Brewster's, I'm a Webster resident and I come to Brewster's as much as I can. I've just got a line, so I love the place too. So I'm very passionate about this particular project as well. So I just wanted to clarify, the, the main roadway there, you see coming off of Ridge Road, is 270 feet long. I understand that it may not have been laid out the way it was originally designed. It's kind of before my time, before I was involved in this project. But to clarify, what we were talking about is providing easement over that driveway for Brewster's to tie in, for the neighboring properties on the other side to tie in, within, within our rights. We have a property line, obviously we can't go beyond it. I do want to clear up some clarification on the proposed edge pavement question that had come up. It's not our intention to work on anybody else's property. I think that's just a road note that ended up on there. In fact, we see an opportunity where maybe we could allow them to approach on our property a little bit with some marketing, provide an easement. Also, the opportunity to tie into our driveway entrance is certainly there if they'd like to do that. But we didn't want to act as though we were forcing them to do it. It's not really our choice, other than we have it there, it's available for their use. If they'd like to eliminate their curb cut on Ridge Road and tie into our roadway, that was the, the whole idea behind providing easement over this entry drive. As is the same for the, for the properties to the west. Which is something that town staff and Mr. Kishan, we've talked about a lot. But we're only, the struggle we have is we understand what's been previously approved, but we're only kind of, we're stuck with what we can do and the fouls and easements that have been filed. We're trying to do the best of what we have to work with essentially. And the gates, Mr. Malta, the secure facility is actually off the tour and subject field on our, further back in the property. So the roadway will not be gated beyond where you see our, our buildings.
One other, one other thing if I could add, and it's not relevant to this application today, but it is to the overall development. When we subdivided this acreage for the self-storage, we also subdivided the frontage of Ridge Road, which is 122.5 acres, I believe, which would be next to the ESL thing. So that's a separate subdivided parcel, independent of this, that we're hoping we can attract some interest there of whatever way, shape, or form it would be for the town. But clearly having that piece up front is more conducive to attracting the end user than this piece in the back, which has only got 47 feet of frontage and it's, you know, 200 plus feet back from Ridge Road. So that shouldn't be lost on anybody that, in a perfect world, will be back in as a user for that site, that's compatible for the town also and potentially for your business.
So what would, that said, what would be the entrance for that parcel? Would it be that same driveways as Brewster's?
There'd be no way to get there because Brewster's will block. Yeah. And it's, it actually already has its own, has a curb cut down it currently. It's fallen apart, but there's a curb up there. It shows up very widely on our, on our site plan.
I'm going to make a suggestion that, that one, maybe the neighbors get together and try and resolve this thing. I guess there's just that this tension and velocity.
Yeah.
And number two is, you have a tape location, but I don't know. You haven't shown what the thing is. Number three, probably, and I've got a whole bunch of different drawings. Actually, you weren't for preliminary, but it'd be difficult to give a preliminary approval. I think you were just looking to do that direction more than anything. Have some final drawings of what you have for preliminary. You know, it shows them what we're, what we're talking about, show the actual drive, show the landscape drawing, have everything on, you know, like where it's supposed to be. And the other thing is, we talked about the front of the building. I don't know if you can think of it again, but I'm going to say it again. There's three stories up and sticking up. This thing has got to have some attraction, an easement. And appreciate that it's bad, you know, if you wrote that that should be a brick wall going up there. Not the stucco. And at least in front of the main building going up instead of those, you know. It's, it's a nice building. We've asked for this and this is one of the things that's in our guidelines to request the easement to do it. We hope you guys volunteer with that.
For sure. Um, just, just to clarify, we did submit, and I believe we did submit a full package that had Brady utility landscaping. The, the only thing that I'm providing here tonight is a site plan for your use. And we did, we did provide a full set of plans as part of, part of our initial application. It was some time ago when we had, had several meetings with town staff, but we will be submitting another.
Yes, I cleaned up one showing where these lot lanes are.
Yep.
You need to refer to it so quick because I'm, I'm looking at it and I'm saying, well, if you're not, if you're within that line, you're right in the property.
Yep.
I can't hear over that.
We gotta do something about that. Can't hear all here. It's too loud.
If somebody, if somebody can open the door.
This is going to happen all the time.
Ask them if they can please quiet down.
This is going to happen all the time, so something's going to be done.
Ask them if they can, prefer to go outside.
For the agenda and the way it was published in the newspaper, in reference to your property, the way it actually reads, it says Southwest Coast 1041, I quote, it says Brewster's Ice Cream. So I don't know if this parcel isn't actually an official address number on there yet.
It, it does. 1051 was the, was the golf tee.
But the public does, only sees 1041 Brewster's and the world of assumption and rumor mill is off and running.
I guess the point is, don't worry, you're not going to change your address.
No.
And it's already said on here. What I would suggest is that we describe our, and also I don't think that's our associate's as an applicant.
We, we did, right, we did, we did submit as the applicant on the project only because sometimes it's difficult to get signatures or coordinate folks when you're, when you're trying to. So sometimes we do submit on replicates behalf.
Yeah, it should be.
Sure.
Just something to help with.
Sure. And if I may, could I request preliminary approval, initial preliminary approval with these items listed so that that way it's at least documented? Gives us something to, to work off of in, in some progress moving forward.
Boy, I don't, I really don't think we should go to that far enough until we actually get. I'd like to review that documentation. Yeah, so we got things clarified. We should really have lot lines.
I think though, we really need to clarify, sit down and eat together, but also really clarify all the Brewster's parcels that's finally subdivided as opposed to, it's fairly different than the existing.
You may have that written in your file too.
I'm, I'm sure I do and I'm, I'm fairly confident because when we subdivided out the parcel up in the front corner, we did a boundary survey of this whole area just recently. So I'm fairly confident that what we show on the plan that we submitted are the actual property lines as they are today. So, so that's where, we can get with them and certainly discuss that and clear up any confusion. But again, it's not our intent to take anything away from them and.
Well, this came as to this concept, do they have the three story?
Yes. Yeah, the only thing that has changed since the concept phase is that three story building has mirrored itself to the other side of the access drive to allow for fire trucks to get through, which was, was part of the PRC comment.
Yeah.
And some of the conversations we've had with the town staff.
The other thing I'd like to see would be the front side of building B, what that would look like.
Sure.
From the road. Or at least the materials that would be used on it.
Yep.
Yeah, then we get complete set. I mean, I'm seeing drawings and pictures and stuff, but I'm not seeing clear what. There's a lot of pictures that they designed. So next question.
Just one final comment, if I could add one thing, please. The previous curb cut in center median, you know, whatever your case may be, that may have been contemplated years ago in anticipation of this rear parcel being, you know, retail or medical or whatever, that was designed to help with traffic and landscaping aesthetics, because you're pushing people back, you know, 200 feet into a 35,000 foot building. So I'd just like the board to consider the fact that this, this curb cut really might actually serve as Brewster's and the orthodontic person that bought that site, they're supposed to build a dental facility there against whatever. But, but the reality is that this curb cut, again, I, I don't think it's going to get a lot of use for golf tee. I think a lot of people are going to go down Webster Collins and just cut through the back and not deal with Ridge Road and traffic and turning. So that, that, that's really just meant to be an access drive and benefiting Brewster's and the big pond. It's, it's a far cry from what was potentially going to go there five or six years ago. I just want the board to please note that if you would, as you consider your, your, our next couple of meetings.
Yeah, that, that you consider with that, for sake of conversation, saying Brewster's does tie into that road is where that would be and how that would relate to what would potentially go in and have the west parcel, how that impacts its management. Actually, you know what, that's the point, if, because if the road, when we talk about that road connecting going east into Brewster's, I don't know what they think of it, but the consideration is you've got that whole driveway that's there now, which could be perpendicular parking on that whole road. If they came in and just went in there, came out, went right out of the road, that may be an avenue investigated.
Yeah.
That would give you a whole lot more parking.
Yep.
That is accurate.
Is that, is that okay?
That's what they do now.
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely something we can discuss with them, but again, it's off our problem. We can give them a curb cut and we'll align it with, with what we could see as a potential orthodontist facility and then go from there and see what can do to help them with, with their parking.
All right, okay.
Associations kind of in the spirit of the original.
Sure.
Subdivided.
Yep.
I do understand that there's a need for it divided by the in and out entrance. It's probably a change. And that makes me more of a question for the EOP.
Yeah, divided was, that was going to be a major thing connecting and even going around the properties along the back, which no one would even happen. So there'd be no real need for it divided. Nobody going back there.
Making sure it's just sufficient for the traffic and even the regular books. Realize that that's actually moving.
Again, the reason originally even recommended this to the CBA was because no volume of traffic. It's not a high intensive, you know, traffic generating. All right, look, why don't we do this and why don't you, you got some notes. Get together with the neighbors, maybe you guys can work something else. Try to second guess where the lot lanes are and, you know, know where that, you're going with it, you know?
Yep.
Sound good?
Yeah, it sounds great.
All right, thanks, Ben. Thanks, thanks, Brian.
Thanks, guys.
So, so would we be on the next planning board agenda after we meet with them? Or what do you need? What, what does the board need from us?
You know, here's what I've got right now. I've got these, you know, a lot of drawings in the building, layout of the buildings and stuff like that. But just a regular blueprint showing the building, what you were already showing, elevations in the building. You know, you've already shown the common ones that we will keep. You know, you've already shown a couple of ones, we can keep these, but I'd like to see it changed, I'd like to see it changed that way.
Yep. I agree.
Just make that attract, that's going to be, that's going to be the focal point, I suspect. Even though it's a hundred and some feet back, it's still going to be there and, you know, at that height, three stories high, you want it to look attractive. In my opinion, I think we've all read out this.
Yeah.
With the guidelines, that does make it attractive, okay?
Sounds good, thank you.
One second.
Sure.
We're, we're in the middle of a public hearing, so.
Off work?
We're gonna, no, so we're going to table to a certain date and continue the public hearing, correct?
Yeah, we can continue the public hearing.
But you're going to table to a certain date?
But we have to figure out, when we get, when we get all this stuff in, I don't know.
I think we can meet with Brewsters this evening and, and talk to them and then we can submit tomorrow, whatever is it. Because we, we pretty much had everything. Again, I'm pretty confident we've already submitted everything, but we can, we can do another submission tomorrow and if it's okay to be on the next board meeting.
That would mean you have to do, it's got to be five business days before the cash?
Yeah, there's enough time.
So you'd cover up the April twentieth thing then?
Yeah, as long as, whatever reminded material the board has requested. We just got to make sure that they get it in. I talked to, who's the girl that you were with, Matt, I told her, make sure you.
Nina.
I guess, we talked about the landscaping.
Yes. Oh, Bonnie, she's our.
Oh, okay, she's the one, she called.
Yeah, she's our landscape partner.
Yeah, she said, you know, so I just said, just make it attractive landscaping design.
Sure.
Let's make it look good.
Yeah.
She agreed to that.
For the twentieth meeting, what are you paying for?
I think we shoot for the twentieth meeting, like I said, I think we've pretty much got everything, we just need to clarify some things.
Okay. Continue the public hearing.
Yep.
We can, Josh, you meet things about five days before then, so that by the April fifteenth, at the latest?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
The next day is the twentieth, or yeah?
April, April, April thirteenth.
Just to turn. As far as visual, the paperwork from, paperwork from first year.
And you know, you always add is that the submissions by the neighbors, the Brewsters, and they can provide a few, so they can get that done as well.
Official.
So then we have, we all should be playing with the same deck of cards.
Yep.
So we all have the same information.
Yeah.
So that we can make intelligent decisions on the same information, not different.
Should we also get a letter that pays the revenue for Brewster?
Yeah, that's what I'm suggesting.
Something over here, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I want the applicant to get copies of those documents. Only because then everybody has what everybody has shared. And that way, our record, your documents and their documents should all be the same. That, that's the whole point.
Yep.
And whatever agreement or non-agreement to make, at least you're basically getting a lot of information that we're all looking for. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah.
You make that okay in a couple weeks' time?
Yeah, for sure.
With all the modifications, with all the, so.
Okay. All right. All right, then we'll, 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 we'll keep the, we'll maintain the public hearing over and table you to the date, what was the date again?
It was the twentieth.
Twenty, April, April twentieth meeting.
Great, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay, thanks, Devon.
Thank you.
Thanks for your information to the later one.